Welcome to the January Business Meeting of the Rock Hill School Board. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Mr. Ethan McQuarner, who's a fifth grader from Evanport Elementary, to open up our meeting. Ethan?
Good evening Chairman Miller, Members of the Board, Superintendent Cook, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I am Ethan McQuarner and I am honored to represent Evanport Elementary School and bring greetings from my principal Ms. Kelsey and the faculty and staff of Evanport. Please stand with me at this time for the moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is now my pleasure to tell you about my experience as a member of the Evanport family. In my six years, I have had great teachers and met some of my best friends. I have been terrific kid several times. I have also enjoyed being a part of chorus at Evanport. In my time off, I was the 2017 Southeastern Karate Champion in my age group for sparring and kata. In 2018, I had an honorable mention in my age group for sparring and kata. I also love to play Xbox and Fortnite. I have a huge heart for animals. Thank you for inviting me to represent my school.
Well, thank you so much. Ethan is here tonight with his mother, Brandy. His father, Michael, could not be here tonight because he's at work. He is also joined by his great-grandma, Charlotte, his grandma Julie, and grandpa John, his teacher, Mr. Small, and of course, his principal, Rhonda Kelsey. He also has a whole entourage of people from Evanport, and I'm not going to mention all of them because then we'll be here all night. But you did a fine job. We're very, very proud of you. It says here on my paper that you don't have any siblings in Rock Hill Schools, but you do love animals. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Um, yes ma'am. I have a great love for animals. I will say I have one sister who is a kitty cat.
Ah!
I did have two, but not this past Friday, but the other one, we had to put her down. But I just love animals and I just love them more than anything in the world.
Well, I do too. I will tell you that many of my board members probably have questions for you as well, so fire away. Ms. Reed?
I am so proud of you. You look like somebody out of a movie magazine on television, or you could be running for office for something.
Yes.
But I'm so surprised to hear that you can do karate kicks and all that. And you can, and you have a part and attire. My goodness. Well, I am so impressed with what you're doing. And you're such a good speaker too. I'm sure your grandparents and the others who have come with you would like to stand up. Can you, would you all stand with him, please?
Yes.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cole?
Ethan, you did an excellent job this evening. Thank you so much for opening our meeting up for us, and I love kitties too. I have three, kind of four, grand kitties. So what do you want to be when you grow up? What are you thinking at the moment?
Well, at the moment, I want to be a WWE wrestler.
Excellent. And do you have your name picked out?
Not yet. I have one in the making though.
Okay, great.
I'm not sure about it yet.
Well, we look forward to watching you one day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mildred?
Ethan? Nice to see you. And I'm a two-question person, okay? The first question says you are a senior at Evanport, you're in the fifth grade, so you're like a senior, okay? All right, so being a senior, what is one thing that you would like to change at your school?
Probably, I would like more recess.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, now, next school term, you will be going to middle school. What are some of the things that you're looking forward to at middle school?
A lot of things. I would, I can't wait to meet the teachers I will have there and the friends that I will grow up with when I'm at middle school, and I'm just ready to take on whatever it has to give me.
Okay.
What an awesome attitude.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I guess that's it. Be proud of yourself. You represented you, your school, and your family exceptionally well tonight, and we look forward to seeing whatever life brings you, because I'm sure this is not the last we have heard of you. So you have a phenomenal evening, sir. Thank you so much. You are welcome. Thank you. So, thank you for that, Mr. Ethan. The local news media was notified and writing of today's agenda and meeting on Thursday, January 24th. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Chair, motion will be approved the agenda.
It has been moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Mr. Hutchinson. Do we have any discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. First up tonight is Recognitions. I would like to welcome Dr. Cook up to do this.
Ethan, you're one impressive young man, very impressive. Madam Chair, Board, good evening. Welcome to our guest in the audience. I'm also going to ask Ms. Mildred Douglas to join me in these recognitions. This is always a highlight of our board meeting, so thank you all for taking time to be with us. We'd like to first begin by recognizing Dr. Christie Beard, who has presented the PESH, Distinguished Alumni Award from Winthrop University, on November 14th, 2018. This award recognizes graduates who have brought honor to the university, the Richard Wiley College of Education, and the Department of Physical Education, Sport, and Human Performance. Dr. Beard was chosen because of her tireless efforts to get children of all ages active. Dr. Beard infuses physical education and a healthy lifestyle in all she does. In addition to receiving this award, Dr. Beard also gave the Julia Post Lectures. Congratulations, and please join us here, Dr. Beard, and let's welcome her and congratulate her. The Medical Advisory Board of the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists confers honor distinction upon Mackenzie McCrory for outstanding academic performance, leadership potential, and dedication to serving humanity through the profession of medicine. The Congress of Future Medical Leaders, 2018, presented Mackenzie with the recognition in Boston, Massachusetts. With this recognition comes all rights, honors, and privileges thereto pertaining to the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists. Please join me in congratulating Mackenzie. South Point High School and environmental science teacher Susan Fields are among the nation's 250 state finalists in the Samsung Software Tomorrow Contest, a nationwide competition that challenges students in grades six through 12 to apply STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math skills to find creative solutions to real-world issues impacting their local communities. Out of thousands of schools that entered the contest, the 250 state finalist classrooms, five from each state, were chosen based on their creative and strategic proposals to solve complicated issues that affect their communities by using STEM learning. All 250 teachers selected as state finalists will receive one Samsung tablet for their classrooms and have the opportunity to advance through future phases of the contest to win additional prizes and educational opportunities. In the months ahead, Ms. Fields and her students will work on projects to address homelessness and affordable housing by researching, designing, and conducting models of tiny houses that incorporate environmentally friendly, energy-saving features. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Susan Fields and South Point High School.
Thank you very much.
Hayden Joyner is a senior at Northwestern High School. He is an ATC Digital Art Design Completor as well as a Media Technology Completor. He designed the graphic "One Team, One Mission, One Rock Hill," which was recently published on Rock Hill School Mugs. He also designed the SAT ACT flyer for the district and is the Social Media Design Manager for the Northwestern High School Athletic Department, working with Ms. West. You can see more of Hayden's work on Instagram @NorthWesternTrojans. His mom teaches first grade at York Road Elementary. We are so proud of Hayden. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Hayden and his teacher, Ms. Soto. And Hayden doesn't need an extra copy, but I'm going to give him this copy anyway. "One Team, One Mission, One Rock Hill." Hayden, thanks so much. Thank you. ATC Culinary Arts Management Program is the 2018 Keystone First People's Choice Winners at the Annual Chocolate Extravaganza held November 8th. Congratulations to Chef Jenkins and culinary arts students on winning first place for the People's Choice Award at the Manchester Village Chocolate Extravaganza. The event is a fundraiser held by Keystone to support individuals in need of rehabilitation and drug abuse counseling. Students have prepared chocolate treats for each board member as a gift tonight. See, right there in front of you. Tonight, we recognize Chef Tyrone Jenkins, please come forward, Jasmine Lopez, former South Point High School student, Amaya Johnson, Rock Hill High School student, Sadia Semerl, Rock Hill High School student, Serenity Bowser, Rock Hill High School student, and Hakim Godley, Northwestern High School student, who couldn't be with us because he's moved, but we want to congratulate and acknowledge him as well. But please join me in welcoming all these folks. Chef Jenkins, thanks for the job. Rock Hill hosted its second annual Middle Grades Battle of the Books on Thursday, November 29th, at Sullivan Middle School. Five teams competed for the trophy, which our district passes from winning school to winning school. In the final round, Rollinson Road Middle School battled Salute a Trail School, which I heard was amazing, and took home the trophy for the year. Rollinson Road's librarian is Randy Polk. District librarians and schools competing also included Renee Enman, Salute a Trail, Jenny Holt, Castle Heights Middle School, Amy McMichael, Dutchman Creek Middle School, and Samantha McManus, Sullivan Middle School. We're extremely proud of all our students who competed in the Battle of the Books and look forward to another round next year. Tonight, we recognize the winning team from Rollinson Road Middle School, Ms. Randy Polk, Media Specialist, Alexa Foyd, Kalis Gibson, Mariah Grant, who might be participating in basketball playoffs, we hope Mariah's here, and Dimitri Putman. So please come forward and let's recognize these folks and their great work in Battle of the Books. Dutchman Creek has been designated a School to Watch by the National Forum to accelerate middle grades reform. This is the third designation of Dutchman Creek and by design, the toughest to achieve. Each designation carries with it exceptions of continuous systematic growth in all domains measured and monitored by the Schools to Watch teams of quality assessors. In other words, it is not simply enough to maintain a level of success. Schools must demonstrate continuous progression towards excellence, for which the award represents. Schools to Watch is an initiative launched by the National Forum to accelerate middle grades reform in 1999. Through the Schools to Watch Initiative, the National Forum identifies schools across the United States that are well on their way to meeting the Forum's criteria for high performance. Forum members believe that three things are true of high-performing middle grade schools. One, they're academically excellent. Two, they're developmentally responsive. And three, they're socially equitable. To achieve this level of performance, high-performing schools establish norms, structures, and organizational support to sustain their trajectory toward excellence. They have a sense of purpose that drives every facet of practice and decision-making. Congratulations to Dutchman Middle Creek, Principal Clayton Moten, and all staff and students and parents who share in this achievement. Mr. Moten, will you bring yourself and your whole team up from Dutchman Creek? Whoever's with us tonight from Dutchman Creek. I'm going to ask Mr. Moten to introduce his team.
Good evening. I have with me my instructional coach, Crystal Gant. I have our reigning Teacher of the Year, Ms. Beth Klippa. I have Ms. Shakaya P., Science Teacher, Samantha Haas, Math Teacher. I have our Winthrop intern, Ms. Brown, and then I have members of our SIC, Mr. Les Slater and Ms. Diane Clemens. So thank you.
Another big round of applause. We are very proud of Dutchman Creek. That is a great accomplishment for that school and our district. As part of its participation in International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program, Sullivan Middle School recently completed all the requirements to be reauthorized by the International Baccalaureate Organization. The reauthorization grueling two-year process challenges administration, faculty, and staff and students to ensure all criteria are met. In the Middle Grades Program, excuse me, Middle Years Program, students engage in internationally-focused South Carolina standards-based education while developing a sense of self-identity and culture. Throughout the program, students have opportunities for unique off-campus field studies. Students are encouraged to become well-rounded and world citizens while progressing through a rigorous program of study, which includes second language instruction through the entire three years of middle school. Tonight, we recognize and congratulate Sullivan Middle School. And with them, I hope I'm going to get all of them, but I'll ask Mr. Roll Dan when he comes forward to share any that I've lucked out. Ms. Yvonne DeWay, Teacher, Ms. Heidi Dryer, Teacher, Ms. Rebecca Shackelford, Instructional Coach and IB Coordinator, Ms. Shannon Hannibal, Assistant Principal, Mr. Graham Thomas, Assistant Principal, and Principal, Mr. Juan Roll Dan. Please come forward and let's congratulate these folks on their great work.
We also have Ms. Soto, sixth grade Science Teacher.
Again, one more round of applause. For the fourth consecutive year, I always enjoy doing that, he always gets a laugh. For the fourth consecutive year, Rock Hill Schools partnered with Mo's Southwest Grill to offer $3 Burrito Day. In October, the one-day event was once again very successful with $1 from each burrito, so directly benefiting the Rock Hill Schools Education Foundation. Tonight, Casey Campbell, Area Catering Manager with Bullard Restaurant Group, and Lauren Rollinson, Catering Manager, will present a check for this year's total. In four years, or actually four days, the Rock Hill community has purchased more than 6,750 burritos. As part of the benefit promotion. This year, Casey and Lauren will be presenting a check for $1,422 to the Rock Hill Schools Education Foundation. That's a lot to celebrate. Casey and Lauren, please come forward, and if we have anybody from the foundation, we'd also like for them to come forward and receive the check.
We actually have already presented the check, but because of delays of weather and stuff like that, I got it to them before the end of the year, so they have it, and I just wanted to say thank you for supporting us and letting us support y'all. And there'll be more to come every year. We're going to keep it going.
Ms. Andra Mack, representing the South Carolina Education Association and the York County Education Association, will recognize Rock Hill Schools Board of Trustees tonight as part of the School Board National Recognition Month. Ms. Mack, please come forward.
Hello. My name is Andra Mack. I teach high school English at the Phoenix Academy in Rock Hill, and I'm also the president of the York County Education Association, which is the local affiliate of the South Carolina Education Association. The month of January marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. We've come today to recognize you and thank you for all that you do for York County schools. Tonight, we brought you a little treat, a red velvet cupcake from Cupcrazed in Fort Mill. We thought that it would be a great symbol of the Red for Ed movement that's gaining momentum in our state, a movement which empowers educators and supporters of public education to advocate for the teachers, students, and schools and their community. The York County Education Association recognizes your contributions to the academic success of our children. We wish to express our sincerest recognition to you, our school board members, for your focus on the well-being and achievement of our children in York County. Thank you.
I must say that I am a member of York County Educational Retired.
And as a quick statement, I also believe that Ms. Mack and her group are hosting a legislative forum on February 7th, so I encourage everybody who's interested in education and the issues that we face as a state to come visit. More information will be posted on the Rock Hill Schools Facebook page.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mack. As part of School Board Recognition Month, Madam Chairman, Helena Miller will recite the Board Member Ethical Principles as provided by the South Carolina School Boards Association. Following her reading, board members will each sign and be photographed a little bit later in our agenda with this SCASPA Ethical Principles poster. Can you recite those, Ms. Miller, without some help?
That I cannot.
This would be a lot to recite for anyone.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
As members of the Board of Rock Hill Schools, we pledge our efforts to improve public education in our community, and we solemnly try to: represent the interests of the entire district when making decisions, and to rely on available facts and our judgment rather than on individuals or special interest groups; understand the proper role of the Board to set policies governing the district and to hire the Chief Administrative Officer to carry out these policies; encourage an open exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making process; seek regular communications between the Board and students, staff, and all segments of the community; attend all board meetings to study issues facing the Board and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussions at such meetings; work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner benefiting the public trust placed in the position of school board trustee; communicate concerns and public reaction to board policies and school programs to the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner; support employment of the persons best qualified for staff position, and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff; avoid conflicts of interest, and to refrain from using our board positions for personal or partisan gain; encourage recognition of the achievements of students and staff and of the involvement of community residents; support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff; take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the Board or administration, and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act; study current educational issues, and to participate in training programs such as those offered through the South Carolina School Boards Association and the National School Board Association; and make our district's educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning. And we're all going to sign this on January 2019. So I welcome all of you up here. I believe there is a pen. Come on up.
wonderful group of board members. Thank you for what you do. Madam Chair, that concludes our recognition. Ladies and gentlemen and delegates, thank you so much for being with us this evening. Thank you for taking time, and thank you for all that you do to support and partner with Rock Hill School District. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Reed had a comment that she wanted to share with us, so before we go on, Ms. Reed.
Thank you so much. I have a former student of mine when I was teaching at Rollinson Road Middle School, and he was one of my star students. And now, I'd like him to stand up. That's Mr. McCrory, and his daughter. Stand up, please. Is going to, has been recognized for... It's hard to find a spot, but you know, try to find a seat. I would also like to acknowledge that we have some new faces in the audience today. I believe that we have some students from Winthrop who are here visiting our school board meeting as part of the class assignment, so welcome. If you have any questions, all of our information is on the website, so feel free to email either one of us. But glad to have you here. Today, we have no citizen participation. Moving on to the consent action agenda. On the consent action agenda, we have the minutes for the November 12th work session, including the data session, minutes for November 26 business meeting, minutes for the December 17th work session, no data session, minutes for the December 17 business meeting, personnel recommendations, and fiscal year 1718 audit report. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Cole, seconded by Mr. Hutchinson. Do we have any discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Next up is our action agenda, and I would like to welcome Mr. Cox up here. We have a group of first read policies, E-Policies, and I will read them to you. It is EB and EBR, environmental sustainability; EC, building grounds property management; ECB, building and grounds maintenance; ECF and ECF Administrative Rule, energy conservation management; EEA and EEAC, student transportation, bus scheduling and routing; EF and EF Administrative Rule, student meal accounts and food services; and EI, insurance program and risk management. Do you have any comments or anything you would like to share regarding this?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Cook, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, our policy revision team is pleased to bring you our third batch of revised business or Section E policies and administrative rules. Two items of note with this batch are, first, that our newly revised policy EEA/EEAC, student transportation, bus scheduling and routing, is being revised a second time after Dr. Nancy Turner, our exceptional student education director, brought forth additional changes needed for the transport of our special needs students. And secondly, that as a result of feedback that we received on our policy and rules at the work session, we have taken our policy EFE and Rule EFER, competitive foods and vending machines, back to the drawing board, and we intend to work on that with our team some more and bring it to you in a fourth batch to be discussed at our February work session coming up. Those are the two items of note, and we have a summary chart for you in your packet, as well as the current model, SC-SBA models, and our proposed, team's proposed, rules and policies for your information. We'll be standing by, I'll be standing by with Mr. Terry Smith, our chief financial officer.
Thank you, sir, for providing that information. At this point, my suggestion is that we approve these as a group, unless any board member would like to pull either one from the group? No? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the group for first read.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the group for first read.
Thank you. We have a motion made by Ms. Owens, and it has been seconded by Ms. Douglas. Do we have any discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. This is passed for the first read. They will be brought up for the work session in February to be discussed. There will be some email communication coming out from Mr. Frost regarding people giving an opportunity to give feedback on the policies, and in theory, they will be up for second read and final read at the February business meeting. Communications. I don't believe we have any communications. Number seven would be report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, safety and security is the number one priority for our students, staff, and families. As a follow-up and continuation of our school safety summit held in November, we look forward to hosting our second summit tomorrow evening, Tuesday, January 29th, from 6:30 to 8:00, right here at the central office, in partnership with our law enforcement partners, Rock Hill Police Department and York County Sheriff's Office. We look forward to sharing feedback from our first summit and continuing the dialogue to seek solutions to help keep our schools safe. On Saturday, February 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at South Point High School, we will be hosting our annual teacher recruitment fair. We look forward to meeting with teacher candidates at this event, and we invite board members to attend and offer encouragement and support to our prospective employees. District leaders hosted the fifth Teacher Listen and Learn Information Session for teachers across the district on Friday, January 18th. This series of meetings is providing a rich opportunity to engage in dialogue with teachers about celebrations, issues, and concerns for our school district. To view detailed responses to questions and concerns from past teacher listen and learn sessions, you're invited to visit www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/tll. Next Friday, on February 1st, school-level teachers of the year will come together for the third teacher forum meeting of the school year. Co-chairs Susan Snyder of Northwestern High, Melissa Tucker of Rock Hill Hop, along with district leadership enjoy working together with this group of teacher leaders to address areas of concern while building capacity, and teacher leaders to celebrate each other and be advocates for the profession. Next Friday, on February 1st, student leaders from each high school, the Applied Technology Center and Phoenix Academy will come together for the third superintendent-student advisory council meeting of the school year. It is always a joy to work directly with our students to address areas of concern and importance to them. You are encouraged to visit the district's capital building program, Build on the Rock, website www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us/builtontherock, for more information on capital projects. The website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. The school board will next meet on Monday, February 11th, for a work session. The meeting will begin at 4:00 p.m. Our next business meeting will be Monday, February 25th, at 6:00 p.m. in the central office. Meetings are streamed on the website and available for viewing on demand immediately following each broadcast. We invite our community to watch meetings live on our Facebook broadcast at facebook.com/rockhillschools. Madam Chair, that concludes announcements for this evening.
Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is number eight, review of school board work sessions. At its work session on December 17th, 2018, held here at the central office, the board reviewed the second set of E-Policies for second and final read, reviewed policy IC, school year, for second and final read, discussed proposed school calendars for 2019-20 and 2020-21, discussed procurement code revision, policy DJ, discussed selection of attorney legal services firms, and discussed board retreat dates. At its work session on January 14th, 2019, held at the central office, the board held its monthly data session, which consisted of focused five area presentations, heard from the Northwestern High School Improvement Council, reviewed the third section of E-Policies for first read, received the annual financial audit and report, discussed the community visit schedule, received a construction update, discussed other and future business, and held an executive session for personnel matters. On January 17th, 2019, the Rock Hill School Board and trustees, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Bill Cook participated in a board workshop on roles and responsibilities. This workshop retreat was held at the central office and was facilitated by Mrs. Gwen Hampton with the South Carolina School Boards Association, SC-SBA. District staff provided board members with an overview and orientation for each of their respective divisions. And that concludes the review of the school board work sessions. Other and future business. The only thing that I have is, and you probably should have been getting this in the mail this week, is...
Just got it today.
Yeah. Just to remind you, is the Art Council of York County is hosting the Teachers' Choice Youth Art Exhibit, and this has a free public reception on Thursday, March 7th, between 5:30 and 7:30, and it is held at the Dalton Gallery, I believe, at the Center of the Arts, right on Main Street. So that is the only thing I have. Does anybody have anything for the betterment of the group?
Dr. Cook, in regards to information that we received on the hotline, we had received some information regarding enrollment in each of the schools, and specifically, we had looked at schools that were affected by the Cherry Park, but then we had looked at all schools. I would be interested in seeing some cost analysis information on enrollment in our schools, particularly those schools that are kind of under-enrolled at this point, based on what I'm seeing and the information already provided. Is that possible?
Yes, ma'am. We'll take care of it.
Anybody else? Mr. Faulenberry?
I was just gonna ask, Dr. Cook, if possible, could we look at that with, I believe, our computerized maintenance system will attach work orders and repair orders and things like that to a school to include those, not just maybe the overhead, but the repair orders? How much are we really spending in total by school? Would be great to see.
Anything else?
I have a comment I'd like to make.
Oh, right ahead.
I was very pleased to see the information that came out as a result of Ms. Owens' question about the total enrollment at Rosewood, Ebbettport, and Richmond Drive before the, and they moved into Cherry Park. And now we have the total enrollment at each school. And then following that, I'm sure Mr. Jones must have gathered some information from all of the schools, and he sent out a list of all of our schools and the enrollments and the demographics of these schools. I was very pleased to see how quickly the response was made and how detailed it was. So I'm very proud of the response that you gave, and Ms. Owens, I'm proud of you for raising the question and for having the attention, our attention drawn to the enrollment statistics. I'm not sure that asking a question like that will help us do anything right now. For, as we go forward, we have to keep our eyes posted to see what kind of enrollment data we are getting, and to find out how the schools are performing, and also to find out if we are really trying to go back to segregated schools or not. When I looked at some of the information, it was scary. So I'm hopeful that as we go forward, all of us will be looking at that, and we'll be paying attention to not just those three schools that moved into Cherry Park, but all of our schools and all of the data. And I'm so proud to have had the data presented so quickly, and you, Ms. Owens, gave us the right question at that time. Also, I want to say something about the open house that they had at ATC. I was so impressed when I got there. The first room I went to had the markup from the amulets that the...
Simulation?
Yep. And they had students there performing CPR on the dummies that were there, an adult and a child. The instructor was just as excited to have people coming in as the students were. And then from there, I went across the hall to chiropractic. The doctor that was teaching chiropractic, I don't know what chiropractic science looks like, but I know it has something to do with your bones and muscles and stuff like that. And from there, I went to the veterinary room. She had dogs running around in there, several of them. I know one of them sniffed me. I didn't know if I should move or if I should cry or what.
I'm sure they're all nice ones.
But then, but then we went outside, and she had a pony there. So just to make a story short, there are so many, many, many opportunities for students at ATC. So I'm very proud of the response that you gave, and Ms. Owens, I'm proud of you for raising the question and for having the attention, our attention drawn to the enrollment statistics. I'm not sure that asking a question like that will help us do anything right now for, as we go forward. We have to keep our eyes posted to see what kind of enrollment data we are getting, and to find out how the schools are performing, and also to find out if we are really trying to go back to segregated schools or not. When I looked at some of the, some of the information, it was scary. So I'm hopeful that as we go forward, all of us will be looking at that, and we'll be paying attention to not just those three schools that moved into Cherry Park, but all of our schools and all of the data. And I'm so proud to have had the data presented so quickly, and you, Ms. Owens, gave us the right question at that time. Also, I want to say something about the open house that they had at ATC. I was so impressed when I got there. The first room I went to had the markup from the, the ambulance that the...
Ambulance simulation?
Yep.
And they had students there performing CPR on the dummies that were there, an adult and a child. The instructor was just as excited to have people coming in as the students were. And then, from there, I went across the hall to chiropractors, the doctor that was teaching chiropractic. I don't know what chiropractic science looks like, but I know it has something to do with your bones and muscles and stuff like that. And from there, I went to the veterinary room. She had dogs running around in there, several of them. I know one of them sniffed me. I didn't, I didn't know if I should move or I should cry or what.
I'm sure they're all nice ones.
But then, but then we went outside, and she had our pony there. So just to make a story short, there are so many, many, many opportunities for students at ATC, and to have the opportunity to go to school in Rock Hill and to pursue some of these careers that you can start off with. Some of them are just fascinating. I didn't get to go to all of them, but I was very, very impressed with the ones I did see. And not just because I was, I was trying to be a presence, have a presence at the school, but I wanted to see some of the things that they were doing. One thing that I did see, though, it was kind of scary to me, was the fact that they were soldering stuff. They had made a drawing on a piece of steel, and they was cutting out something, and the sparks were just flying. They didn't get me, though, because I can't move fast, but they didn't get me. But I'm so proud of the work that the staff and the faculty at ATC are doing, not just because I'm a teacher, I have been a teacher all my life, really, but because of the work that these kids can get, and the certifications that they will be eligible to pursue as they get their high school diplomas. They'll have something else that they can do. So those are two things that I wanted to really point out, not to neglect talking a little bit about the Choice Fair that was at South Point. All of those things have happened in a, you know, in a short period of time, but I am so proud of the opportunities that students can get in schools in Rock Hill. I know I've talked a long time tonight, but when you get old, you have to take advantage of these times. Thank you.
You are fine. And thank you for those comments. I know that we're all very, very proud of our students at ATC and every kid in the district, and we want you to be part of our team. So like Dr. Cook mentioned earlier, we have the recruitment fair, and we hope to see all of you there, supporting our recruitment staff and our personnel department. So that's that. If we don't...
Good, sorry, can I ask a question? Is it okay?
Sure.
Okay. You mentioned something when you were speaking, you mentioned something about how the enrollment reports show movement towards segregation in our schools. Can you elaborate on that?
Can we do that after the business meeting part? And we'll have some section for it, because it's not technically part of the agenda, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Good? Thank you. Given that, we are now going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of student matter, personnel matter, and contractual matter.
Madam Chair, I motion that we move into executive session.
Second.
That has been moved by Ms. Cole, seconded by Mr. Hutchinson. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, seven zero.